At this time, I'll call the December 14th, 2017 meeting to order. This is for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have some changes to our agenda. We're going to table the consideration of purchasing two new pickup trucks to probably next week's meeting. And then also, we're going to add two executive sessions. And the first one is going to be attorney-client privilege and include Bob Perry. And then the second executive session will be non-elected personnel. And I'd move that we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
You have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda includes the minutes of December 7th meeting, payroll of $342,014.98, fund expenditures of $163,392.75, added tax of $589.62, abatements of $10,089.90, wire payment credit cards, $18,788.15, also wire payment utilities of $6,836.66.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second it. Okay, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go next to Commissioner comments, and Craig, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I meant to ask this before we come in, to make a difference. We're all hooked up to the emergency generator, Brad. You know, we were here last Thursday and the power went off.
The generator runs the 911 center, the server room, the computer servers, which includes the phone system in the courthouse. And then it also runs half of the hallway lights and the emergency lighting and the meeting room downstairs. That's it.
So in other words, jail's not hooked up to at all?
The jail does have a certain portion of it to keep just the generators and minimal lights running.
No way?
HVAC, none of that stuff in the generator.
In other words, if somebody needed to be booked in, they'd be?
They would be able to book them in because supposedly the computers and stuff are running.
Oh, okay.
With a portion of the lights, but not the whole thing.
Okay. I, when we were down there, I was thinking about, you know, what all was running with the, with the generator, because I know there was, you know, lights running down the basement there, you know, not all of them and stuff.
Yeah, the meeting room has, has been recirculated to that with the, where the premise is that that's our emergency operations center if we had a disaster, so we could move into that and operate everything. But the generator's not big enough to run the whole courthouse, so.
Right, yeah.
It's a 25 KW, so, and we're pushing the limits on it now. Originally, it ran the 911 center and just the hallway and the, and the server room because all the servers are needing to function, and we've since added the meeting room and part of the jail and some of that stuff on it.
Yeah, I know the comment was made down there, was that, you know, all the plugins put with the food for stuff that truly may go off, lose power. That's all I have.
And I never did actually ever hear what the problem was last week.
There was a substation fire up in Clay County.
Oh, was there?
Yeah, I think that's where it was.
I know it was pretty broad.
Yeah.
But it also brought the light problem that we had, because we, they had just exercised our generator the week before and it worked fine. And as you well aware, it didn't come on that particular day because of circuit board and the automatic starter had gone bad, so we ordered that and they just fixed it Tuesday, so.
Well, do you have anything else?
No, I've gone.
Falling up on that a little bit, I guess, how old the generator is that and do you have that on the capital plan to replace it anytime?
That generator was purchased in 2000 when we built the 911 center, so it's going on 18 years old. It only has 950 hours on it, so it's still mechanically sound. I would anticipate when we do a renovation or something, or the justice center, that we may look at something big enough to operate the whole facility.
Well, I think that should be in the plan.
Yeah, so, but that one will go many more years. I mean, it's just, the failure's not, the failure that we had doesn't indicate the generator's out of date or anything, it just, well, those electronic failures have happened, so.
I didn't really attend any meetings this last week, but I did go to some Christmas programs and also, again, Saturday at K-State to the graduation. I had a grand dollar graduating education, elementary education, and I guess the comment I'd like to make about that was, the number of students graduating in education is not new as many as there are in other fields, and I think that could be a problem in the future. I'm just surprised that the other fields had lot, twice as many graduates as what the education had, and, so, like I say, it, it's a field that we need new teachers coming on, because we know we have retirements, so, it just, that just kind of surprised me, but I'm proud of my granddaughter, she's going into that field. That's all I have.
Very good. Okay, earlier today, we had Randy Gassman in here, and he's with Hotberg Gassman Hoffman. They're an auditing firm, and, and he just kind of did their review with us, and we certainly appreciate the work that he does, because it does give us opportunity to have outside eyes looking at what we do, and kind of an affirmation that we're doing things right, but also, you know, he does give recommendations, so that keeps us from having, you know, something unforeseen come up, and I appreciate the work that he's done. And, and so that was the first part of our work-study session this morning. After that, we had a department head meeting and elected officials downstairs, and we were able to get the updates from the department heads and just kind of give us an overview of some of the things that they have in the works or have just taken place. It's very informational, and it's just good to have that dialogue back and forth, and the communication factor is very helpful in that regard. Also, earlier this week, Brad and I also, you know, serving on a committee for Dixon County Economic Development Committee, and we're doing some interviews and recommendations and just working through that process. And we also, Doug Kissinger was in here and gave us just kind of an update that they're kind of closing things out on some of the fundraising, but they've raised close to 1.1 million dollars, so, and there's still some additional pledges and monies that are going to be coming in that he anticipates. And so this really is going to help provide us and give us some abilities to do some things, economic development, which are important for the entire county, so we really look at that as a positive benefit entering the year ahead, having this in place. Is there anything in addition?
You might mention a report of Randy Barton, you know, on housing.
Oh, yes.
Kind of gets important to notice.
Okay, and that, that was something, you know, a lot of times, various department people will tell us kind of what they have going on, and Randy Barton in the meetings mentioned, because they issue the permits for the septic tanks and, and some other, but there's 10 new houses that are being built in Dixon County right now. And so, you know, that's always good news for the builders, but it's also kind of a positive indicator of success and economic growth for a county to have new houses being built.
New student, a student?
Yes, I was going to get to that.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm through with my part. The next part we have is comments of anyone in the audience, and we didn't forewarn you that we have a student that's visiting with us today, and typically what we like to do is find out a little bit about you and why you're here and, and what you're working on, and so if you would stand up and introduce yourself, please, and tell us where you attend school and what information you poked together today.
I'm Courtney Hendricks, and I go to Abbling, and it's for my government class, because I go online.
Okay.
And so, we go around to a couple meetings every semester and see what they like.
So have you been to another meeting, or is this your first one?
This is my first one.
Okay. So, and why did you choose us as your first one, or a little more convenient, or?
Yeah, and I don't have school today.
No school today? Okay.
Well, that makes, that's kind of special.
Now, sometime it's, so when there is school, so they can get out of school to come here, but, but anyway, we're glad you're here, and, Craig, do you want to do the drill?
Yeah, I will.
No, I'll, I'll do this.
Okay.
Craig kind of started a little bit of a tradition, but it's, but he, he's asked the students, which I'll give this question to you, as far as, what's your impression as far as what does the county commission do, what does county government do? Do you have any ideas on that coming in?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, did you, you have your driver's license, I assume?
Yeah.
So, this is one of the locations where you come in to get your driver's license. This is where people come in to pay some of their taxes, which they're doing right now, this time of year, because we're responsible for roads and bridges. And Craig, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, you use the landfill.
Directly or indirectly?
Indirectly, you know, we got a sanitary landfill that we're responsible for, the county's responsible for, and, you know, if you happen to get arrested and you happen to go on to jail, you're going to go through the county jail before you go to prison. Everybody does. If you don't go to the, right there, you-
Not everyone gets arrested, though.
Well, you gotta be arrested and convicted.
But we do meet on a weekly basis typically, this, this time on Thursdays, and as you can see on the agenda, and I don't know if you had a copy of that or not, we can get that to you, but it tells what some of our expenditures are and a little bit of what the cash flow and some of the issues that we're dealing with. And so I think as you hear some of the reports and some of the comments that follow, you'll gain a little bit more of an idea, so, but thank you for being here today. And also, I'll just mention briefly, on the executive session that we have at the end, those are for items that we are not ready to discuss publicly, and sometimes it can involve land acquisition, sometimes it involves personnel or non-elected personnel, which we have today. And so when we do that, we clear the area and the press leaves, and, and we discuss those specific items for a specific amount of time. And I know you probably have a paper that needs to be signed, and so before we go into executive session, I'll go ahead and sign your paper in just a little bit, you can wait, but before we go into executive session, I'll go ahead and sign that, so you don't have to wait around 40 minutes for us to have our, our discussion. Are there any other public comments that anyone would have or questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to our report of the, from our county officers. Brad is our county administrator, so if you'd go first.
Sure. The first thing, we did purchase diesel fuel last week, a transported, a low bid price from Limp KC was 228. As you can see, the two prices were extremely close, a couple tenths of a cent difference, so. You've got in your packet, under the red tab, you've got the year-to-date budget reports, and Janelle's here to answer any questions on that, I'll go over into that bus. But the sales tax is very pleasantly up, which we anticipated it would be, and we believe that that's what we do to the Chisholm Trail 150th celebration that happened in September, but we're up by four to five, well, roughly $5,000 for the month, which keeps us in line and puts us that much closer to our annual budget target of 1.25 million. Same, same goes for the special sales tax, is about the same amount, so. And I think we're going to easily make that target amount, so.
Yeah.
All the departments themselves are within where we anticipate they should be. We've got a couple of them, but continue to be quite a ways over like 400, I don't think we discussed that.
Yeah. I know you wouldn't know this, but just what's, could you find out, or maybe, is what Abbling's, you know, because that'd be, you know, their sales tax?
I can, I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just kind of, you know, from what it was from last year for them, because they've been the biggest impact.
Yeah.
I mean, not that we wouldn't have it, but compared to, you know, what they had last year.
Yeah, and if most of that is Chisholm Trail, then there should proportionally be the same increase, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't know if there's anything else going on in any other part of the county that would account for that, that increase, so. Let's see, I provided you a couple copies of anticipated or proposed changes from the planning commission as it relates to our county comprehensive plan, and they essentially, the changes deal with adding into the wording into chapter four, chapter eight, when it relates to economics and land use, into, to include energy-related projects. And I think that comes about, and this is assumption on my part from talking to Tim, but I think that comes about as a result of the wind energy projects that we're, we're seeing coming that are into this area and wanting to promote those, so, in the land use, in the, in the economic sector, so. We'll put that on the agenda for next week. Again, it's been recommended by the planning commission and comes to you for approval, so.
And I should have asked just Tim down below, or downstairs. I had, Dave Thurlow got ahold of me and wanted to know if, what the impact of rock quarry was on our, our county, you know, the economic impact. And I told him it was probably a war, sure, it would cost us money.
It'd cost us money. Costs us money from the standpoint of the road damage that, that we have to keep up with.
Yeah.
For other counties and state trucks and contractors coming in utilizing the rock quarry. And we've been, I don't know, we've been through that the years past, but, you know, 1400 Avenue, for example, gets, just gets the doggies kicked out of it with the heavy, heavy equipment.
Put rock on it, grind it up in the dust.
Yeah, so, well, and the asphalt on 1400 Avenue, the asphalt, of course, you know, it just takes that much more to maintain that because of the rock.
I was coming down 1200 Avenue, I guess I was thinking 1200 Avenue.
And so, there is some trade-off, because it's a benefit that we have, rock quarry in our county, and we don't have to travel as far to get gravel, but at the same time, we're paying a lot to, to promote those. Now, years ago, there was a, the county commission passed a resolution to create a separate tax for every ton of gravel that was taken out of there to help pay for the roads, and the quarries sued us, and the quarries won, and that was found to be improper, so that was taken off, and in an agreement at that time, the quarries agreed to pay-
10 cents.
10 cents a ton, I think it is, for every ton, or every ton of gravel that goes out of the quarries, which we do get a check from every quarter for that, but I will tell you that that check doesn't pay for the damage to the roads by any means, so. When you talk about, you know, what's it costs us and stuff, it's, it's a lot deeper subject than just-
Trade-offs.
Yeah, it's, there's some trade-offs there, so.
And is, is the state requirement to reclaim it, is that state requirement, or is that county requirement?
Both. It, that's included in the condition or use permit, and it also has to coincide with state permits as well, but once they're done with that quarry, they have to reclaim it, so.
Yeah, well, I didn't, you know, I, I didn't ask Dave, but I'm, I don't know if they're zoned or not in Clay County.
I don't know, they are not.
I don't, he didn't seem to think they were, so he should have known.
But if they're looking at doing something like that, they probably want to look at being zoned to protect themselves, so. But that is one of the regulations in the condition or use permit, and I know we went through that with, with Walker Stone up north, and their big reclaim majority of theirs, they still had a little bit to do, and over east, and, and, of course, this quarry's done by Woodbine, they have reclaimed a couple of those as they take progress, so.
Yeah, the one out there just southwest, they reclaim, I mean, a quick quarry out there, a couple of years ago, and I drove by and it's-
And Hams does an excellent job of, of the recreation process, so, but, you got caught me off-guard there, I wouldn't have checked that, so.
Well, you think it'd be beneficial that we just visit with them sometime and say that road costs have gone up considerably?
Which they're for.
And whether they would consider increasing that 10 cents?
Well, we can certainly, uh-
Because the cost of roads have gone up.
It costs the same thing to ask, you know?
Well, I mean-
We need to communicate some of our concerns and, you know, I mean, there's, we need to work together on it.
We need Jamie back in, Dr., you know?
Yeah, we'd love to talk to her.
Our contact used to be John, and of course, John's passed on now, so he is a good contact to have. My understanding, I believe the main contact now is, is John's son or something, I haven't met him, but, I was Jamie for, for the gravel, so.
Well, it might-
It certainly wouldn't cost anything to ask, so.
Well, I think that's something we might be-
What we get in is, in all honesty, is a drop in the bucket, what we have to pay into, so.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I work with Jefferson County with the Hams quarries. The Hams quarries also have a huge landfill that sits right inside the Douglas County mine, and to solve the same problem, we'll do a special benefit district with assessments yearly, where you group the cost of the road that the county was going to pay, they cut a deal with Hams, and Hams has paid for the road and county maintenance. But it was like an eight-inch thick concrete road in order to withhold all of the trash trucks that were going in and out there. But, you know, the Hams with the leverage the county had was the ability to create a benefit district, to improve the road, and then to just do assess, special assessments back against the one user of that road, in this case, it's the quarry, in that case, it's the landfill.
We do have a, you know, there's a contract between Hams and Liberty Township, right?
Yeah.
Where the, Hams agrees to pay for a certain, a two-mile section of Union Road between 1400 and 1800, where their quarry is, and the year before last, or I think it was '16, they put a pretty substantial amount of money into Union Road, and they chip sealed that gravel road, which I'd never heard of before, but they did. And portions of it, they've held up pretty good, a couple sections of it have not, so, but they, you know, Hams did some, you know, succumb to some pretty healthy bills on that section for the township. So, they're not totally above helping out, they're not helping out at all, so it might not hurt to reach out to them.
Well, you have the power of doing a special assessment, you see, and the, just a matter of creating, the district sort of has a vision basis to what you're going to assess and how much, and what the demand's going to be, and we didn't, the county didn't have to go that far, because Hams wanted to keep control of what they were doing.
Let's see, we've got, I talked a little bit about the security issue earlier this week, and tomorrow, I'm sorry, this week, 911 system, our 911 staff is in training downstairs, as I mentioned, in the department head meeting, learning the, all the new next-generation 911 equipment. Next Tuesday, we, is the cut-over date for that, and we hope everything goes well, and from that point on, we'll be operating on the new, the new 911 system. We did get a good article in the paper this week on, on that switch over in the technology, so, appreciate that. We'll have, next week, we'll have the reappointment of two of our planning commission members, James Headstrom, Tony Feldbusch, have both agreed to be reappointed for another three-year term. And then the pickups, we've got two pickups that were, were on the agenda today to be purchased, and I had requested that we table that for a week, and allow the local, local company to do a little bit more research on, on their pricing, so. And we'll take that up next week, so, that's all we've got.
Doug, do you have anything for us?
Well, the, tomorrow is the, journal entries will be submitted to the court for the tax sale. It's not the tax sale, but this will be the final document that the court will need to approve to then go about scheduling the tax sale. And then also with me, I have brought in the contracts for the indigent defense services. There are four individuals that are on that contract. We've been delayed some this year because of the fact that one retired, and we've had to fill the other position, so we have, I have the contract signed, and it's ready for the chairman's signature for the indigent defense services.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll go to notices and communications, and we've received a few letters. This is from Goldberg Group and Architects, "Thank you for making 2017 a success." This one is a Christmas card. It is from the VYVE Broadband, and they're located, they do work down in the Harrington Tri-County area. And so we have their Christmas card. We also have one here from Judge Michael Powers and family, "Happy holidays." Another one to the Dixon County Commission, and this is from the North Central Regional Planning Commission, and, I'm just trying to, okay, I guess it's, it's their official, it's not their board, I thought maybe we'd see Craig's picture on here, but, but anyone who's received that, if you'd want to look at those. Also from BG Consultants, and they just kind of did a nice architectural drawing of intersection, have a wreath in it, but they also have a note that the spell checker was under the weather, that elf, and if we identify any errors in this and notify them, that, that they will send something back for the effort, so. Anyone that has some spare time, we don't have any snow days. Janelle, you've got, what, the 22nd off, I'm sure you could take that home with you over Christmas.
If you win something, you gotta bring it in.
Okay. And from the Health Department, just thanking us for the gift card that we gave out to the grocery stores, and also from the county clerk's office. We have our newspaper that we receive on county news, and just gives us a little bit of a update of what's going on, various counties across the nation. And then from Janelle, we also had our budget summary that we've received, and also from the clerk of the district court, Leah Hearn has brought in, or certified what Cindy McDonald has brought in, so. That's all we have. Just any other comments or communications any others have received? Okay, at this time, we do not have any unfinished business. As Brad mentioned, the consideration, consideration to purchase two new pickup trucks, that has been tabled on the agenda till next week. So the only two things left we have are the executive session, and so the first executive session, I, I would move that we enter that session for attorney-client privilege, and it's going to include our attorney, Brad Holman, commissioners, and also Bob Perry. This is going to be for 20 minutes, and so-
General, general. And Janelle.
And Janelle, okay. And we'll start that at 11:32. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So in three minutes, we'll enter executive session, and I'll go ahead and sign the paper that, that you need signed, unless you want to hang around for 40 minutes.
You got it.
Well, you've got a few notes written, so good for you, Courtney.
I can't figure out this Irish sweatshirt you're wearing.
It's my boyfriend's.
I thought, I thought maybe you were from Chaplins, so.
Okay. The baseball?
Yeah.
Okay, what's his name?
Travis Burton.
Okay. Mike, I live in the Chapman School District. Well, Hearn does too.
I do too, but I'm a long ways from Chapman.
And I didn't ask her, so when do you anticipate graduating, are you?
In March.
So this, so you're down to your senior year, right?
Yeah.
You've got a few months to go? Good for you. Well, good luck with your further schooling, your career, whatever direction you have lying ahead for you, so. Nice to have you here.
Yeah, thanks for telling.
Well, okay, at this time, I'll move that we return to regular session.
I'll second it.
We have the motion in second to return to regular session at 11:52. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay.
You don't get one. You just turn one in.
Nothing like just dropping a bunch of stuff on you and saying, "Well, bye."
Well, yeah, that's, well, it's-
I know you'll communicate with Brad and Will-
Yeah.
-as we try to figure out-
And, you know, and-
What some of these things, ideas are worth.
The key learning is the architect. And so, you know, I mean, it's, we can have continual discussions, but you just have to give us some directions of specific areas that you might want us to look at or not. I've been talking with Brad throughout the last couple of days, I thought, you know, I just thought it'd be better, it's easier if you get here and tell you what I know.
I think it was dangerous for me to try and explain it, so.
You would have done a good job. Thanks, good to meet you all, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
You take care.
Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session at 11:55 for 20 minutes for non-elected personnel.
Second.
And, okay, do we need our attorney in on this?
Uh, no.
Not necessarily? I don't know that we do, so, and I think for the first-
10 minutes?
10 minutes, yes, we'll just have the three commissioners here, and then Brad will bring you in at 12:05.
Okay.
So knock on the door. Watch out.
You want me to leave the contract with you so when you come back into session?
Yes.
For that, it only needs your signature, but approval, of course, and then-
Yeah, I'm going to dial him to put my file.
Yeah, you need to sign, you know. Are you done with yours?
Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion we return to regular session.
Second.
We have the motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We had a positive review, and we're pleased with what our county administrator does, and we appreciate the work that he, and preparation that he puts forth, I think it helps, helps all of us in many ways. And so he'll, he'll be receiving the 2% just like, like all the others. I don't know, that doesn't even mean a motion, does it? Because we already did that in a way.
We already passed the term, yeah.
I just put that you have an executive session for his evaluation.
Do we need to take care of what?
Yes, you have to, if you can do that today. Yeah. It's basically extending the contract, is what it is, so we already have one in place, so.
Okay.
It's redoing it for 2018.
Well, this is the agreement to provide Indigenous Defense Services, and I would so move that we enter this agreement for the next year.
I'll second it.
Have the motion in the second, any further discussion?
One thing I would note for the record is at the same rate of paying.
Okay.
As far as a budget item, so.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.